Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of June 10, 2012. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the arrangement. They always provide in our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Mayor Rueng.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
And for the record, Vice Mayor, Ibera.
Still here.
You know you haven't seen him in a while, but he's still here.
You knew he was.
Aaron Ackman, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do have one announcement, which is good for the individual and not too good for the city. And it has to do with our Community Development Director, Aaron Ackman. This is his last meeting. He's going to be Assistant Development Director in the City of Palo Alto. And I just want to take this opportunity to recognize Aaron, who's been a key member of our staff and making the transition at the end of this week to Hawaii and then to Palo Alto, right? After 10 years of service to the city of San Bruno and the community, our Community Development Director, Aaron, is resigning to take another career in the city of Palo Alto. He began work with the city of San Bruno as an assistant planner in June 2002, 10 years ago, my goodness, and rose to the ranks to become Director of the Department five years later in June 2007. The results of Aaron's work and his enthusiasm for forward-looking planning principles will continue to be seen in San Bruno at the crossing in our newer subdivisions in the future as we work toward implementation of the downtown plan and the transit corridors plan. Aaron, I can't thank you enough. All right, three minutes.
Well, I'd like to first thank the City Council. This has been an awesome City Council to come up with and be able to present to. The Planning Commission as well. I say planners always have an unfair advantage because they get to go through minor league baseball for a while and give a ton of presentations to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission has been great as well. And finally, to Connie as well. Not many people get to be a director at a relatively young age and took a chance with me about five years ago as a director, so I really appreciate that. And I'll miss everyone in the city, the department head team, my staff, and everyone else.
Thank you, Aaron.
If I could just, my two cents. And I've known Aaron in other capacities, too. And he's, for those that don't know, I mean, he's been very good for this city. And I brag about our planning department throughout the county. And it's been a joy to work with you and see you grow. And I've been a better designer because of staff, you know, and your staff in the planning department. And so you follow a long, a long history of really good, young planners. And I wish you well and your family.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Presentations? We don't have any presentations this evening. Review of the agenda. There's no objection. I'd like to remove item number 11, which is the annual report of the Culture and Arts Commission to write after public hearings, which is item number eight. Approval of amendments of the regular City Council Meeting of June 26, 2012. Any errors, corrections, omissions? Seeing none to be approved and submitted. Consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implement in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second.
So I would like to pull item D and E.
Item D is waive the first reading and introduce ordinance adjusting water rates as presented in the notice of proposed increase mailed to all property owners. And E is waive the first reading and introduce ordinance adjusting wastewater rates as presented in the notice of proposed increase mailed to all property owners. First of all, would you like to approve the remainder of the consent calendar?
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. First of all, just procedurally, let's ask the City Attorney what happens when we pull an item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. So these items were on the consent calendar and they're actually before you tonight for a procedural reason, and that is that we found some errors in the original ordinance that was introduced at a past City Council case. So that's the reason why they're back on for you this evening. The item before you is not a public hearing. That public hearing has already been set and held. And so however you are required to take whatever public comment, there may be on each of these two items. And of course, council members can make comments themselves. One of the things we received is a couple of questions after the staff report was prepared. And I just wanted to clarify and respond to those questions before you open it up for the public. One question that was raised is whether the original ordinance that was introduced was invalid or in some way ineffective. And the answer is no, but just because it was only introduced, it was never adopted. So that what's back in front of you tonight is a reintroduction of an ordinance with certain amendments in it for procedural reasons that we talked about in the staff report. So there's no invalidity that we need to worry about. It's being reintroduced if you approve tonight on a majority vote. A second question that was raised is do we have to redo the protest hearing? And the answer to that question is also no. The reason for that is because the protest hearing is about the rates and about what the rates should be set at. And so there was a protest hearing on that already. The ordinance that's in your packet does not make any change to any of the rates that were set forth in the notice for the protest. So that protest hearing is still valid. So that's the reason why you don't have to redo the protest hearing or reopen the public hearing. However, you are available now to open it up for public comment and then council member deliberation and action.
All right. Michael, you pull these?
I pull them. So I'd like to, first of all, just reiterate something I said early on, and that is that I am definitely in favor of the improvements that are being proposed and largely what's driving the increase in the rates. However, there were a number of things that came to light after the original proposal that came back from the subcommittee that Councilmember O'Connell and I sit on. And most of that had to do around the financing and how aggressive we're raising the rates. And that, of course, caused me to reconsider the way it was being proposed. And also, when we first introduced, when we first sat down to review this with a consultant that was helping us set the rates, we went through a lot of the improvements. And I spent a lot of time with the Public Services Director going through a lot of the changes that have been made to date and looking at our targets, both what we're imposing on ourselves and what's been imposed on us legally. And all of that mechanically made sense. But when we brought those recommendations back, I believe it was the Vice Mayor who asked, you know, what are the impacts to the people? How do these rates impact people? And that's not something that we had considered. We didn't get enough complaints that we were legally compelled to not impose these rates. But there were a number of letters that came in that identified hardships, personal hardships, based on the rates we were imposing. And so that is why I've chosen to make sure that we're staying focused on this, that we fully understand what we're doing, and really vet out all of the details. Now, I've had a few side conversations with the City Attorney regarding some of the language, the original language, and why that was changed. And I do understand now that the original ordinance, the way it was written, although it did call for the two-thirds vote, that particular piece of language seems to be irrelevant to the overall rates that we're setting, which is really the key factor here that we're proposing. So I understand that. But I still did have, after going back and rereading, and there's a number of pieces of legislation that sort of drive our ability to set the rates and our mechanism for doing that. So I went back and tried to find the relevant sections of the Health and Safety Code, California Government Code, and then there are references also to the San Bruno Government Code. So a lot of different things. State Constitution is also referenced, Prop 218 is an amendment to our Constitution, and that dictates how we go about doing the protest portions. But even going back to the Health and Safety Code, it seems to me, after reading this, and I'd like to read this section, Section 5471, which is the section that was specifically called out in the original ordinance, and it says, "In addition to the powers granted in the Principal Act, any entity shall have power by an ordinance approved by two-thirds vote of the members of the legislative body thereof to prescribe, revise, and collect fees, tolls, rates, rentals, and other charges for services and facilities furnished by it, either within or without its territorial limits in connection with its water, sanitation, storm, drainage, or sewer system." And then the next section goes on to make a reference to Section 753 of the Government Code, which is, I believe, what we're referencing in the current ordinance. So the way I read this is that our basic authority to set these is set first in Health and Safety Code and then a reference made back to the Constitution on procedural things. But reading this, it still doesn't say to me that this is something, especially because they use the word fees, which in previous sections of the Health and Safety Code, it goes through definitions of different things, where fees are something other than taxes placed on the property roll, which seems to be that dividing line between what would require two-thirds and not. And so reading this, it doesn't appear to me that it would preclude regular fees, which is what we're proposing to impose. So I'll let you answer that one, and then I'll go on.
Sure. Well, you're right that it's confusing. And as a result of that, there have been some court cases that have interpreted that section of the Health and Safety Code. And what those cases said is there's basically two ways that cities can adjust rates for these kinds of enterprises. One way is if you're going to put the rate on the property tax roll, then you have to use the section of the Health and Safety Code, and you need to get a two-thirds vote. But that's only if you're going to put the rate on the property tax roll. The alternative mechanism is a section of the Government Code that should have been used previously and is now being used. If you're not going to put the rates on the property tax roll, then you need a simple majority vote. And that's what the city is proposing to do at this time. So it took some court cases to establish that Section 5471 of the Health and Safety Code isn't the only way to do it. It's just one of the two ways to do it. And it depends on if you're going to put it on the property tax rolls or not. And since the city is not proposing to put it on the property tax rolls, the city can use the alternative method in the Government Code.
Okay. And I know that back when we were at the subcommittee level, putting the, at least sewer portion of this, I believe, was one of our recommendations, putting sewer fees on the tax rolls.
Are you asking me?
I am.
It was something that was brought up, and we discussed it. And it was, we ultimately, after a lot of other discussions, sent it back to staff to find out what the repercussions would be, particularly when we were talking about the 25% discount for people who have low income. And that, the chart, the fees, let's see, the non-payment fees go to pay that. And if it was on the property taxes, we may not have enough. So that was all being discussed. So I believe the last recommendation was to wait a year until staff figured it all out. If I could just weigh in, that is absolutely correct. That is staff's recommendation as well. And at this point, we are still completing review of those issues. And there is no recommendation in front of the City Council at this time to collect water or wastewater rates on the property tax bill.
Okay. And so if we approve the current changes with this ordinance, then does it preclude us from doing that in future years or until we have another go-around of these changes?
Does it preclude us from placing the wastewater rates on the property tax rolls? That needs to be part of the review that we need to do in order to bring this issue back for any future consideration the council might like to have. At this point, I can't answer that question, but it's certainly something that, and let me just check and make sure I've understood the question, and that is that is whether now, a year from now, considering placing the collection of the wastewater rates on the property tax rolls, would that affect the approval of the rate and/or cause the rate to have to be re-vetted or redoticed or addressed in some manner? Again, I can't answer that question right now, but certainly one we need to consider as part of that overall review.
Okay. And so I have some clarification. If these ordinances pass tonight, we are not absolutely committed to raising the rates to the maximum allowed in these ordinances, but we could do something, something up to or less than the way those rates are currently outlined in the ordinance. I'm just wondering, by what mechanism do we revisit that next year or the following years?
The way that the ordinance is currently crafted, it would set the rate at the recommended levels for a period of three years. That was the previous, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, a period of five years, yes. Our previous rate was in effect for three years. So unless this, so a subsequent action could be taken, I believe, to amend that ordinance. And again, I don't know what the procedural implications of that would be. We would need to advise you separately on that. What you cannot do is consider a rate that exceeds the amounts that are currently captured in this recommended ordinance without another Prop 218 compliant public mailed notice and protest hearing proceeding. So exactly procedurally, what we would need to do in order to allow you to consider a lower rate going into effect, say, next year or the year after that, is something that we would need to advise you further on. At this time, the rate that is being, that's in front of you, is the one that we've been discussing. And that would go into effect as soon as the second reading and the lapse of 30 days, should the council take action on what's in front of you tonight.
Okay. If I may, I'm sorry to interrupt. Something that the City Manager said made me also want to point out that, per the ordinance, the new rates would not go into effect until September.
Okay. All right. So that was, I think, it for my question. So the few comments I had on this before it goes, and I guess since it's a consent item, that means we're not going to vote on it, or we're only going to kind of take them both and?
Approve it.
Okay, just approve. So, you know, my only consideration here is that I wish that we would have done a little more to look at some alternatives to these rates before moving forward, because they are so aggressive. I know the comments were made that, you know, we're trying to catch up. Some mistakes were made in the past, and we let the infrastructure go. And I understand the impact of that and the fact that we are catching up and that it is important. I also read letters from people that wrote in saying that they wanted these rates to pass because they had been impacted by the overflows. And they saw firsthand what the issue is. Some of the ideas I had in terms of how we fund this is, I know that we're still learning a lot from the video inspections. We're getting better at identifying the hotspots, which means that possibly we could have deferred some of the major projects and continued identifying hotspots, at least until the economy had a chance to run its course and show more positive signs. I know on the general fund, we're seeing the beginnings of some improvement. And I was also thinking that perhaps the general fund should be responsible for funding some of these. I know that historically, it's always the fees that fund the infrastructure and the operation of public works. But those things are, they're set, and the general fund tends to have good years and bad years. And we've been fortunate that we've been able to put money away into our reserves and both the reserves that are assigned to our infrastructure as well as the general fund's reserves. And so I'm wondering if it wouldn't be appropriate to use some of those funds to offset these costs. I know that we say these are rainy day funds, but, you know, we really, we're in a situation now where we're against deadlines, we're facing these deadlines that were imposed on us. And so could those things possibly be considered urgent enough that we would consider using those funds? So those are the sort of things I was hoping we could consider. I know that once this passes, we're pretty much committed to it. And I know we're going to move on. There's going to be a lot of other important issues coming up, and this may not get revisited. And that's why I asked about the mechanism for revisiting this. So I'm hoping that we, as a council, will kind of remember that this is something that we can revisit and possibly should revisit as more funds come into the city and there's an opportunity to do something beyond what's required for our basic operation. Maybe this is something that we can again consider and maybe offset some of these increases in future years.
Well, Michael, I want to say I have no fear that as long as you're up here, we're going to revisit these. So also, I just want to say I appreciate your thoroughness on this and your sensitivities to the community. We've been here since, three of us anyway, since '95, when we actually had to address this issue very aggressively. And we've made a lot of headway, but not enough headway. We got into a big, you know, mess with the baykeepers. And a lot of the money that should be going to the streets and the infrastructure is going to lawyers' pockets and, you know, planting seeds in San Bruno Mountain and doing all different kinds of things where it really doesn't belong, in my opinion. So part of this, on the other hand, despite the rates, is the council's wishes to avoid that in the future. And if we have to get aggressive, we can get aggressive. And I think that's what we're doing tonight. But there's nothing to preclude us from actually shaving back on some of this. And I'm happy to do that. Nobody, I pay the same rates as everybody else. And I don't like it any more than anybody else. But when I see, because of, you know, timidity that, you know, we run into problems down the road and get sued by cottage industry entities, it's very frustrating for me. So if there's a way we can cut these SSOs down and get the city back in shape, and still, at the same time, revisit this in the very near future, in the next year or two, and see where we are, I think that's progress. And I would like to ask the City Manager to staff to bring us a report, let's say, every six months, and let us know where we are with the money we're being asked to pay and the money that's being spent, and where we are at any given time, so that we know that progress is in fact being made. Anyone else?
As you said, we have had to play catch-up. We're not the only city. I was just reading in the Samhain Times, City Council set to increase sewer rates 6%. And this is from San Carlos. I brought this up because at one of our earlier meetings, someone had said, well, San Carlos isn't raising the rates. Yes, they are. They are raising their rates. And they also were sued by the baykeepers. So we're not the only ones. I know that doesn't help when you have to write the check. But I agree with the mayor, and we can certainly, I don't see any reason why we can't come back. I'm sure Mark will tell us what the mechanism is to say, we've made all this progress after nine months, a year, whatever it is, and maybe the following year, we can not raise it quite as much, so.
Certainly, the City Council can amend the ordinance whenever it chooses.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Please, Chair.
Rico.
I appreciate everyone's comments. But as I voted no last time, I'm going to vote no again this time. I'm not voting no, not to try to say the rates don't need to go up. They do. There is work that needs to be done. And as I sat up here in '09, and we did it for three years, I had asked a question again about the CIPs that we had for a 10-year outlook. What have we accomplished? Where are we at? Where do we need to go? I know the SSOs, from my understanding from staff, have decreased. So the staff has been doing a good job. Those out in the field are doing the best job that they can to ensure that we make progress in that area. I also think, as we heard from a staff member, about trying to come together and sitting down again, and maybe even if it was just for a year, to see if we can't find ways in which to minimize and decrease the unfortunate burden that many will have to face. So again, it is very aggressive, a five-year, when the last one was three, I just think is too long. I know the intentions are all good to bring it forward, to bring it up, to keep it on the front burner. But sometimes, it's perceived as a blank check. And I'm not saying that anybody's taking advantage, but I'm saying the intentions are good to always bring things back. But are they always addressed in the manner that we think need to be or the time of the priorities that the community faces at the time? So again, I don't want to miss, I don't want anyone to believe that. I don't believe they need to be raised. I do. I know the work needs to be done. I just think it's too aggressive, and I think five years is too long.
Vice Mayor?
I don't want to belabor this, but, I mean, I just wrote the check for, you know, for Water and Sewer last night. And, I mean, and it's high to me. And I made the case that it's, the new rates are going to be, you know, even tougher for me. But we were elected, or at least I feel I was elected, to sit up here and, you know, make the tough decisions to improve this city. And we're coming up on a 100-years, 100-year-old city that is arguably, you know, been neglected. And, you know, not to pat ourselves on the back, but it's, you know, it's a long time coming to start upgrading this city. And I can appreciate my colleagues, you know, wanting to, you know, watch the pennies and everything and try to find other funding sources. But there's other things that the city needs. And to say that during good times, maybe we can, you know, supplement that, oh, there's so many other things. We have street improvements. We have lighting improvements, sidewalks even. I mean, there's so many things that, you know, future administrations are going to have to deal with. And if we don't start now, it's just going to get more expensive and more difficult, you know, to take care of them. But I'm happy with the way that this is going to go forward. And yeah, it's going to be tough. But that seems to be how things are going to have to be, you know, in today's, running today's cities.
All right. City Attorney, can we do both these at the same time? They're under consent?
I would request a separate vote on each.
All right. Under consent calendar, item D, waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance adjusting water rates as presented in the notice of proposed increase mailed to all property owners.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Item E, waive the first reading and introduce ordinance adjusting wastewater rates as presented in the notice of proposed increase mailed to all property owners.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. Item number eight, public hearings. We have two this evening. The first one is hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule for 2012, 2013, establishing fees for municipal services. And the second one is hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution adopting a groundwater management plan for the Southwest Side Basin.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This item before you, the master fee schedule, is a compilation of City Council-approved fees for city services offered to members of the community. The city is allowed to set fees in a manner that allows for reasonable recovery of costs incurred providing services and programs to the public. Departments conduct periodic review of their fees to ensure cost recovery is being achieved and propose changes to fees in those instances where costs to provide a service has increased. The proposed changes to the master fee schedule that is being presented to you tonight are limited to three chapters to the master fee schedule. The first change is to the library, which is chapter six. No changes to fees are being proposed in Sections 1 and 2, simply some changes to the wording for purposes of providing greater clarity. And then Section 3 includes the addition of fees associated with the rental of the recently renovated community room at the library. The proposed fees mirror the rates charged by the Recreation Department for those similar facilities. The next chapter where changes are being proposed is Chapter 8, the Public Services Department. Again, some minor verbiage changes are being proposed for, for the purpose of providing greater clarity. And in addition, an hourly rate for a public works inspector is being added to the hourly rate section. It's not a new fee or new rate. It's not a new fee or new rate. It already exists in the master fee schedule in conjunction with encroachment permits. However, it is the hourly rate that is used for all site visits and inspections. So that is the reason for including it in this new section. And finally, chapter nine of the master fee schedule, parks and recreation fees. There are a number of changes to those fees. Staff performed an analysis of costs associated with providing programs and classes and have recommended a number of changes due to the increased cost of staff time and supplies associated with offering those programs. I'm not going to go into detail about the individual changes, although I'm happy to answer questions on those, if any, if you have any. Finally, just to add on the parks and recreation fees, all those fees did go before the Parks and Recreation Commission and were approved in May. One final change with the parks and recreation fees in section six, which adds the option of a 15-gallon tree for tree replacement in conjunction with a tree removal permit in addition to the 24-inch box. So that summarizes all the proposed changes to the 2012-13 master fee schedule. And one other item of note is that the resolution that is before you tonight contains a couple of changes from the resolution that went out in the packet. Just very quickly, the third whereas was changed to provide a little bit better clarity of the intent of these fee changes and has been rewarded to state that the city council has directed that fees for certain city services should be set at an amount to recover the cost of delivering the service. And in addition, the verbiage of state constitution was added following the article references in the fourth and fifth whereas.
Any questions of staff?
Through the chair. On the parks and recreation, I had questions under the after-school summary day camp sessions. You have items number 13 and 14. We have a playground program which is free. So I'd like to have clarification of what that is. I remember from my day, but obviously things have evolved quite a bit since I've left, to know what that is and if it's free or trying to recoup costs. Second is the leader in training. I didn't quite know what that was, but then I learned at dedication at City Park, we had some young people that are leaders in training. And those are volunteers, so they're not paid by the city, but they are, it's another aspect for them to be involved and volunteer their time. However, they're, or I'm sure they're not paying, I bet it's their parents or somebody else, some nice person, $50 a session. And how long is a session? And what are we currently charging them? Meaning, is it $35 as of today and it will go up? Or has it been $50?
So to answer just the question on the dollars, the $35 is the rate that is being charged today. The proposed rates would not go into effect until the fall. They would not be in effect for the summer programs or classes, so those rates are not in effect right at this time. Does that answer your question on that?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I don't have specific answers on your other questions as far as what the playground program is or exactly what the leader in training program is.
So the leader in training program is actually a, it's organized as if it is a volunteer program, but it is also, the young people in that program are actually around 12 or 13, so not quite yet old enough to maybe be on their own at home or have a job or become a recreation leader. And so it is a way for them to get some experience while also having care from adults while the summer is going on and their families are working, et cetera. So the families are kind of accustomed to looking at it as both a way for their children to learn something, but also as a, they still need some supervision and care because of their ages.
How long is a session, do we know?
I do not know about what the length of the session is.
Is it weekly? Most of the sessions in the summer, I believe, are, I'm going back to old days there, but usually the new format was weekly.
I believe that is correct and it goes through most of the summer. Leaders in Training Program isn't a brief, like one-week camp. It's actually something that goes the entire length of the summer because during when kids are at school.
I guess my concern is, is that if it's a week session and we're taking a young person and we're asking them to volunteer to assist and we're charging now going to be, was $35, $50 a week for them to volunteer, I mean, not many folks volunteer and then you have to pay to volunteer. But I understand you're saying there's some costs associated with it, which is they're having, I guess, they're assisting the paid staff.
Correct.
So the paid staff is watching them, who's helping to watch the kids. Just on the outset, it just sounds very expensive. I guess that's my, the bottom line. I'm trying to understand the $50, is it, because really, the young people in the program are paying for the staff time. So in essence, they're paying for the same staff time. I'm not trying to be nitpicky, but I think we have young people and I think it might be an economic burden to some folks who, as you say, are looking to try to engage them in some leadership qualities and skill set and also have a safe place to go during the summertime. And that might be, if it's $50 a week and you want it for a month, it's $200. And obviously, summer is not just one month. So, and that's, I'm sorry, that's kind of where my concern and trying to understand. And then if we have a playground program that's free, then in essence, it kind of dicks itself.
I understand the question regarding the leader in training program. And I think that the assistant director has articulated what we know about it. I believe that the per session is consistent with the weekly program period and that that is likely a weekly fee. Why it is identified as session as opposed to week, I don't know. And I think that we are unable to answer that question precisely tonight. So you have a couple of options. One would be to remove this particular fee from any action that you take and ask for subsequent clarification and action on that item. Or to take some action on it pending clarification or the response that is, that best satisfies the concern that you're addressing. In other words, if that, if session means the entire summer, which I believe is not correct, you could make that as part of your determination tonight. Regarding the playground program and the designation of that program being free, my only observation would be that it begs the question of why does it show up in the fee schedule if there is in fact no fee for it? But this program, in my understanding, is a different program than the summer day camp or other type of more structured supervised program. So I'm not really entirely certain what your question is about the playground program. And I want to make sure that we're able to get you the information that you need. Pardon me? If you could, I'd appreciate it.
The only thing I was saying is if it's a program and you have young people attended and there is no cost, there obviously is a cost to the city.
There is a cost.
So, but it's free. So I understand, like in the leader in training, it's because they have to be supervised. Well, I'm sure in the playground program, somebody needs to be supervised and they need to be paid for.
Right.
So it begs the question, how can one be free and the other one cost the volunteer?
Right.
So to me, and excellent point about, then why is it in here too? If it is free. So is that?
I understand the question. My short answer, obviously, we would like to be able to get you some additional information about this. The short answer is that, as the council probably knows, these fees do not actually represent, for the most part, 100% cost recovery on the programs that they are charged for. There is, this is a, most of the cost is covered for the, for most of these programs. But there is a balancing act that goes into determination of fees that starts with a understanding of what the cost of delivering the program, and these are typically individual services. So there is a policy articulated here that says tax revenues are not being used to, for the most part, to provide a service that is consumed on an individual basis for the benefit of an individual and not shared generally by the public as a whole. The, that said, the, that is part of, that's part of the evaluation. What is, what services should be considered for cost recovery? Next level evaluation goes to what is the cost of the service. Additional evaluation occurs based on where are the other venues where this service might be provided in other cities, for example, by private providers, and what is our comparative cost? How do we, how do we stack up? How do we assure that there are an adequate number of participants to make the program viable and cost-effective? So there are a number of things that we evaluate as part of the, as part of the cost and the cost recovery of the program. A playground program very typically is offered for the purpose of providing an alternative and is generally viewed as something that should be supported by normal general fund revenues. And so that is philosophically, that is how cities typically look at some of their parks and recreation programs. And my understanding of the supervision that is provided, the limited amount of supervision that is provided in a playground program would typically be understood under that, under that general category as the reason for it being offered without a charge. So there is supervisory, there is some supervision provided, there is some expense incurred, and it is generally considered to be a general fund-supported type of service. What I don't know at this point and would like to be able to get you more information about is a little bit more detail about how that program actually operates, when and where, and how does it compare to the level of support and cost that is provided, for example, to the day camp program.
Yes, I would too. Thank you.
I'm going to jump in here if I could. I've got, I've got a real issue with a lot of these increases and actually, there's one major decrease. The whole camps thing is being increased, in many cases, by $6. And the only, the only explanation is that the increase in prices reflects increase in the cost to run the camps. So I'm sure that the Park and Recreation Commission got a fairly detailed presentation on a lot of these items, I'm assuming. I don't feel comfortable just agreeing with that without any background information. I think this council has challenged some of the master fee increases, you know, as far as regarding this facility even. And I think if these fees are not going to be realized until next year, I think, I'd feel more comfortable reviewing, you know, what the actual increase are. Even what, what sort of discussion happened at the Park and Rec Commission? You know, maybe there was more of an increase and they backed it off. I mean, those are the sort of things that I think we should take in consideration. But I, you know, this is, it seems easy to just say, yes, okay, that's understandable. But I mean, what if it comes back again next year and it goes another $6 up and everything? And all of a sudden, you know, the community starts screaming that, you know, this used to be a great program, now it's unaffordable. So, and I don't like the excuse that it's still comparable with neighboring cities. That shouldn't even be a factor. It should be something that is, that we're paying, that, you know, that we're providing and that we're getting a certain measure of payback for it. So I'm in favor with excluding park and recreation fees and revisiting.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Through the chair.
Michael.
I wanted to chime in. My son was actually in the LIT program, so I can answer part of your question. So the session, the way the sessions are defined, it's a week at a time. And they have to sign up for at least, well, I think, three sessions in order to participate. And I'm pretty sure, because I wrote the check this year, that it's already at $50 a week. Because we signed up for four weeks and it was $200. So we might want to check and see if that's...
Overcharging.
Yeah. Can I get a refund?
Ice cream bloody murder.
So, yeah, so in terms of the period, it is, it is one week a session because you have to sign up for the full week at a time. And it corresponds with each week of camp that they sign up to assist with. So, and the fee, I guess, is a little high, 50 bucks, but now I have a...
All right. Anything else before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would any members of the public elect to address the council on this issue? If I close the public hearing, you're precluded from talking about this again. And their motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion second on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any action by the council? More discussion?
Since I threw a wrench in the deal here, I am going to, correct me if I'm wrong, I can introduce the resolution for adoption excluding...
Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, I would just exclude park and recreation fees if I can.
City attorney?
Just for clarification, by excluding, you mean to keep the fees at the same level as otherwise reflected in the original...
Exactly. No changes to park and recreation fees as listed, as specified, but introduce a resolution for everything else.
Okay. And it's your intention to bring those back with more clarification. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, would it be also possible, since I've gotten the answer that it may be $50, not $35, that we check the other rates to see if they're, because obviously...
Absolutely.
We may owe refunds.
Absolutely.
Unless Councilmember Salazar wants to vote.
Okay. Was that an introduction with the modifications?
Yes.
So I'm going to clarify that you introduced the resolution and you excluded park and recs, and that will come back to you, correct?
Exclude the changes to park and rec.
Okay. Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Wuang.
Aye.
The second public hearing is to hold the public hearing and adopt the resolution adopting a groundwater management plan for the southwest side basin.
I have here with me Jim Blanke, who is the project manager for the project. I will summarize for you the history of the project and also the purpose of the project. And I will let Jim to take you through the specific recommendation and the findings of the plan itself. And then at the end, you will have opportunity for clarifying questions and comments. As you are very well aware... Just some technical difficulties here. You can, needs to warm up. Will takes long. I will keep talking and hopefully the slides will show up. They are not that critical. As you are aware, the city provides drinking water to our residents. Health, and here it is, health of the water is provided through surface water, through the HHC system and SAPUC manage and provide that water for us. Health of the water comes from well production and from the groundwater. Reason why maintaining and sustaining the quality and the quantity of this critical resource is very important for the long-term health of the city. Reason why back in 2007, the city took the leaders... Reason why, back in 2007, the city took the leadership role and was lead agency requested a grant from the Water Resource Board in collaboration with Daly City and Cal Water, who are partners in this, in the management of the basin and also in the application for the grant. In 2009, you, this issue came against before you and you approved a contract for RIME to manage the development of this groundwater management plan. And also then this item became, came back for your consideration in 2010, when at the republic hearing, you expressed your intent to develop a groundwater management plan. The purpose of, the purpose of the management plan, in essence, to establish a collaborative framework for the long-term sustainability of the basin. There are many stakeholders who had the same joint purpose and interest to manage the basin for long-term sustainability of the capacity and the quantity, the yield of the basin, but also to maintain and to be able to guarantee the quality of the groundwater For the first time, also in this development of the plan and in this collaborative framework, private entities and stakeholders were included and they participated very actively in the development of the plan itself. And one of the most active participants in the development of the plan were the cemeteries, which have a very strong interest also in the management of the basin. In the beginning of the development of the plan, an advisory board was established with, of course, the partner agencies and also with broad participation from other stakeholders, including the Water Resource Board, BASCA, other local agencies. The city of Colma was a very active participant of the development of the plan. The advisory board held six advisory committee meetings and also five public meetings. Local residents were invited also to participate in the development of the plan and if you residents from San Bruno expressed their desire to be, to kept informed and to be aware of the progress of the development of the plan. The plan itself has two major components. The first component is a summary of the available information and scientific base. Based on that scientific information, then it was made, was a assessment made on the condition of the basin itself. Based on that information then and the assessment of the condition of the system was developed on a collaborative, based on a very collaborative approach, a joint purpose, goals and objectives, and also strategies, how those objectives can be achieved, and also specific threshold was, or was established or trigger points when, what kind of action then the stakeholders and the advisory board for the management of this basin will need to take. And I will let Jim to take you through those major, those two major sections of the plan. And first, I will let him also, which I intended to, but I didn't, I skipped over the basin itself, the location of the basin, and also the overlaying entities and agency of the basin.
So the Southwest Side Basin...
Excuse me, Jim, you're going to have to slide over just a little bit. You're in the screen.
Right away.
Yeah. Here, there you go.
There we go. So the Southwest Side Basin is a portion of the overall West Side Basin, which extends from the Sunset District of San Francisco through northern San Mateo County as far south as Burlingame. We've looked at just the San Mateo County portion of the basin, so extends from the northern boundary of Daly City down through the Cal Water Service area in Colma and South San Francisco, through San Bruno, Millbrae, and into Burlingame. The bulk of the groundwater production in the basin is within Daly City, Cal Water, and San Bruno Service area. Millbrae and Burlingame use exclusively surface water for their supplies. So as Clara mentioned, you know, we began the stakeholder process and we began the document itself with developing a common technical understanding of the condition of the groundwater basin. And one of the basic questions is, well, how much, how much can we pump? How much can we pump sustainably? And so what we looked at is, as far as sustainability is concerned, how much can we pump over a long period of time while maintaining the current groundwater levels in our basin? And we looked at this largely through the numerical groundwater model, which was developed collaboratively with the other stakeholders in the basin, San Bruno, Cal Water, Daly City, and the SFPUC. And what that allows us to do is allows us to look at calibrated estimates of recharge. You can see here we have recharge of 8,600 acre feet per year. And we can compare that with our recent pumping, and we can see that those numbers are pretty close in balance, so it's showing that we're able to maintain our current levels of pumping over the long term with, and maintain our current groundwater levels. And we took that information and plugged it back into the model for a more robust analysis, where we can look at different management techniques and how those management techniques can change our groundwater levels, and looked at what's really the maximum amount of groundwater we can pump and maintain zero change in groundwater elevations. And we were able to confirm that 8,600 acre feet per year is really that level, and we defined that as our basin capacity yield. And that is, again, very close to our current production of about 85, 64 acre feet per year. And so that's the basin-wide number. So we're pretty much in balance there, and it's showing that our current conditions are going to be able to maintain the groundwater levels for years to come. The next step we did was we looked at the 2010 urban water management plans that were developed by all the agencies in the basin. And those 2010 urban water management plans provide projections of future groundwater production through 2030, some of them through 2035. And we added them all together and looked at what those increases over time are going to do to our groundwater basin. And what it shows is it shows a slight increase in groundwater production over time to about 8,900 acre feet per year. That's a couple of percent increase over our basin capacity yield. And given the range of climatic variability and the uncertainty in our demand estimates, uncertainty in the modeling, and we feel that that is still pretty much in balance and still pretty much shows a sustainable level of groundwater production in the basin. We also looked at the quality of the groundwater, and we found that, you know, the basin has generally good quality groundwater and that the water delivered to the customers are meeting all state and federal regulations. So based on that technical understanding, the common technical understanding that we came to with the stakeholders, we developed a management framework to manage the basin moving forward. And we did this through what are termed basin management objectives. And the basin management objectives basically takes our overall goal and splits it up into more manageable pieces that are measurable. And you can define triggers and then define actions that you're going to take if those triggers are passed. So we looked at five different areas. The first one is maintaining acceptable groundwater levels. And we set our thresholds as the historical minimum groundwater levels in our wells. And so what we said is if water levels go below that, that's something we want to look at. And so we want to have kind of a line there. So if it goes below that, the document lists a series of actions that could take place and kind of a toolbox for the, for the agencies to use at that time of things that they could do. None of them are prescribed, there's no actions that have to be taken. We wanted to leave the flexibility there because, you know, conditions change over time, there'll be different knowledge, different conditions, and so they want to be able to be flexible on how to react if those thresholds are passed. Similarly, for the groundwater quality, we want to maintain or improve groundwater quality, and we focused on two different constituents, chloride and nitrate. Chloride is an indicator of seawater intrusion, and nitrate is a nutrient that we see more in the, more towards the north in the, in the South San Francisco, Daly City area. And we set the chloride threshold at 10% above the historical maximum. We just want to keep an eye on our chloride levels and make sure that we don't see any evidence of seawater intrusion. We haven't seen any yet. We want to make sure that we continue to monitor that and be aware of the conditions of our basin. And then for nitrate, we set that at 80% of the MCL, the maximum contaminant level that's set by DPH. So if we see rising nitrate levels, we want to focus it on those wells and think, and try and understand why those are increasing, if they are, and what kind of management measures can be taken to try and reduce that impact. We also looked at limiting the impact of point source contamination. So these are in the United Airlines facility, gas stations, dry cleaners that may have leaking underground storage tanks. And there's no, there's no quantitative measure for this, it's mainly just making sure we coordinate with the, with the lead agency for those cleanup activities, whether that's the regional board, the EPA, or the San Mateo County. We also looked at land subsidence monitoring. Land subsidence hasn't been an issue in the San Bruno area like it has been in the southern part of the bay. We want to make sure that we stay on top of that and see if that becomes an issue in the future. And we also looked at managing the interactions of our groundwater with our surface water and see if there's opportunities to maybe increase recharge from our surface water courses and make sure that the groundwater isn't causing any problems with our surface water courses. And so based on those, basin management objectives, we have a series of items in the plan that will help us meet those objectives. First and foremost is maintaining our collaborative approach and working with the other agencies and stakeholders in the basin through the groundwater task force, which is established largely through our advisory committee. We're looking to pursue additional grants. The groundwater management plan was funded through an AB 303 grant from the Department of Water Resources. If you recall, the city received a previous AB 303 grant to help us install seawater intrusion monitoring wells along San Francisco Bay. So it's been a good program and it continues, and we want to potentially look at analyzing shallow groundwater conditions in the basin and how we might be able to improve recharge and increase our ability to produce groundwater. And going back to the collaboration framework, we want to be able to continue to share our hydrogeological knowledge and operational information so that all the stakeholders can benefit from all that knowledge, continue monitoring and reporting of groundwater conditions, continue our meetings with stakeholders, and update the plan when and if additional information is available.
It is our recommendation for you to approve the groundwater management plan, and we'll be our intent also to come back probably next meeting to make a recommendation for you to support the grant application for the project, what Jim just was referring to for the shallow water monitoring and also update of the flow monitoring program.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? All right, at this time, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Would anyone in the public like to address the council on this side? If I close the public hearing, you're going to be precluded from discussing it with us. Any action?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion or action? Irene?
Clara, toward the end, for implementation, it talks about the administration of this, but it doesn't really name who or what agency is the lead agency on this. So does each agency that's listed, is each agency that's listed in here accepting the same ground management proposal? Or do they each have their own and then we're still getting together and collaborating? Or I didn't quite understand how it actually physically works.
This is a plan developed in collaboration with the other agencies. Was already in your package, a letter of support from, or a letter of acceptance from Cal Water. They already accepted the plan, and it is their intent to implement the plan. Also, you received a support letter from SFPUC. The reason why you received a support letter and not a approval or acceptance, that practically SFPUC is part of the West Side Basin, but not the Southwest Side Basin agency. But they still have a very specific and strong interest in the proper management of the Southwest Side Basin. Reason why they express their support and their intent to work collaboratively from now on and also to implement the plan. And is Daly City is intending to have on their council agenda for the next month or so, and is their intent, they are, they are supporting everything in this plan. This was developed in collaboration with them, and it's my assumption at this time that they will approve this plan, how it's presented to you tonight. Of course, I cannot guarantee that, but certainly based on the information today, they are supportive of the plan and their intent to implement the plan. Now, in the plan itself, they are included many possible means, how you can implement this management plan, from the most flexible one to the most stringent one, entering in joint power agreements. Was our recommendation at this time, based on the fact that this will be the first groundwater management plan approved for this basin, and the information level can be further improved, at this time, our more flexible approach managing the basin through a collaborative means would be the most recommended at this time. If later on, the agencies will feel that for, for certain reason, a MOU would be a next step recommendation to enter and in a memorandum of understanding with the other stakeholders, that could be a next step in the process.
Okay. I understand all that, and I read that part, but, so, like, who, do you have regular meetings? Somebody calls it, somebody's in the lead, some, it's, do you need, the people that are here, that are listed, all the stakeholders?
Right now, the city was the lead agency for the development of the plan, will be our intent to have those task force meeting on ongoing basis. And will be established by joint agreement by that group, how often would be useful to have those ongoing meetings. Maybe later on, doesn't necessarily San Bruno has to be always the agency who will call on those meeting, but maybe those can be rotated between those partners and agency. But everything will be based on the recommendation and the proposal in this plan.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
A second. I like your question. I'm not sure if it was, who is the lead?
The lead agency was San Bruno. The lead agency is for the development of the plan, the city of San Bruno, and is our intent from now on also to make sure that the city is feeling to take the lead to make sure that those meetings and collaboration will happen.
Okay. That's, I, I've seen plans, and I've been, party to plans where we... That's, I've seen plans and I've been party to plans where we, the great, we ask all the questions and they sit on the shelf and people forget about them. So this is, I don't want that to happen. I know you wouldn't let it happen, but just making sure. And then the other question, I have to say, whoever put this together, every time I had a question, I kept reading and the next page answered the question. So my list was very short now. It talked in here about United Airlines being a concerned partner, but I don't understand why the airport as a whole isn't. I know they're part of San Francisco PUC and I understand all that, but not so much the water use because that's different, but the contamination part, I'm very concerned that they as a whole may not be as aware or as stringent, watching out as stringently as they could if they're not more a part of this. So I don't know if that's feasible or, you know, out the door or what.
You are absolutely right and probably was my mistake not to list them as stakeholder here, but certainly they were invited to participate in the development of the plan and they were included in the task force. And they, if I remember right, they attended the first meeting, they expressed some interest, they were informed, they, basically all of the information was sent to them also. They were more silent, but they were participant in the process. And I am assuming that their presence, stronger presence will be needed based on their history in the collaboration on this project would tell me that they would be willing to come to the table and that would be advisable to have a stronger presence.
Okay. Thank you. That was really my only concern after all that.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Any action?
Let's see. I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Before we do nine, we're going to move item 11 up, which is to receive the annual report from the Culture and Arts Commission.
That was all super fun. Well, we were sure for a while.
Hey, every two weeks, come on by.
You chose a good night.
I usually just watch for some talk, but.
Yeah, you wouldn't watch this much.
Melody Tobin, Culture and Arts Commission. I have some of my fellow commissioners here. Tammy Parker, Pamela Gamble, and Carolyn Livinggood. We'd like to thank you for this opportunity and thank you for your continued support to the commission. After listening to fees and expenses and it's nice to have something that's just about culture and arts, that's not about money, even though we do spend money, but we bring in our own money to spend. So we're going to give you an overview of what we've done the last year and a little bit about what we hope to do in the next year. So the purpose of the commission, we're responsible for promoting the artistic development of the community and preserving San Bruno's diverse cultural heritage. The commission's goals include acquiring and maintaining an inventory of public art, sponsoring programs and events that enhance the quality of life for the residents, and improving the image and character of the community. In the past year, we have dedicated the recognition sculpture in the city park, piloted public art exhibit program, we have movies in the park, Shakespeare in the Park, and we've welcomed new commissioners. Our newest commissioner, who's not with us this evening, is Pamela Madden. And June was her first meeting, so we are excited to have some new blood on our commission. The recognition sculpture project was a joint process with the Parks and Recs Commission. Over two years, we selected a site, solicited proposals, selected an artist, and brought to life the council's vision of a recognition sculpture to honor those who have served San Bruno. We're very proud of this joint effort and the results it's produced. The art exhibition policy, the goal of this is to encourage local artists and appreciation of art in the community, to provide a space in the community for the public to view a wide variety of art. The policy was approved in April of 2012 and a call for artists was issued in this past June. Our first exhibition will be mounted in September of this year in the library. Our annual event, Movies in the Park, what we're probably most known for is September on Friday nights, we show movies in the park. It's coordinated one evening with the family overnight in the park. And we have an average of 150 attendees per Friday night. We have a group, a youth activity group, that comes and sells treats and snacks. And everybody has generally good time. The weather, for the most part, still holds since September. A little chilly, but everybody bundles up and has a great time. We also have Shakespeare in the Park, usually in October. Last year, the weather was unbelievable. Everybody came in shorts and t-shirts. It wasn't as well attended as we'd like it to be, but hopefully in the coming years it will catch on and people will start to realize that October for us is Shakespeare in the Park. The projects that we have proposed for this upcoming year, of course, Movies in the Park, presently on the city website, you can vote for your choice for Movie in the Park. We've put up 10 or 11 selections. The one that we're most pulling for that's never made it to the park is Jaws. So if everybody, I'm lobbying for my favorite movie, log on and vote for Jaws.
Good family movie.
It's a family movie. We won't do it on the overnight, but it's a family movie. We do plan again to host Shakespeare in the Park, to have our first art exhibit and to continue with the art exhibit. It's a 12-month program and we're going to rotate local artists every quarter. And then we have some suggestions for future projects, which we of course will bring to the council. We have something to bring with you in August for the consent calendar. Some of our ideas for future projects, the commission would like to return to the council later this year to present some of our suggestions. These are a few of the ideas we're exploring and would be interested in any feedback council has to offer. On Sneeze Lane, the commission has developed a list of potential project art sites. After reviewing them to determine land ownership, visibility, project type, we feel the retaining walls along Sneeze Lane west of 280 are a good possibility because the property is city-owned. It's on the west side of town where there currently is no public art and is a highly visible location. Performing art possibilities, we've discussed partnering to bring some community theater, poetry, or possibly having live classical music during lunchtimes at the Bay Hill area to promote relationships with our business community. And that is what I have. It's short and sweet. Council, have any questions?
Any questions? Irene?
I think it's wonderful. I'm so excited to see the recognition sculpture up. It was fabulous. And if anyone hasn't had a chance to see it yet, it's in San Bruno Park and it's next, it's to the left side of the recreation building in between the park, in between the pool and the recreation building. It's wonderful. I have a question or an idea throughout or something. And the year 2014 is our city's 100th anniversary. You're nodding, so you've already figured that out. So I'm wondering if you're looking for something to do to commemorate that in a way of public art?
We are open to partnerships and one of, what we do is we try to partner with other community bits. And we've actually had someone come and do a presentation to us about the 100th anniversary of the school system. But we are looking for the 100th anniversary of the city and we will, we will be doing something. But it is definitely something we will put on our agenda. We are here to do at your direction what you have as a vision for the city. And we couldn't do what we do without the support of the council and without the support of our staff. Our staff liaison is John Alida. He's the one that keeps us on track and we couldn't do what we do without him. Thank you.
Wait a minute.
No, you have more? John, you want to take a bow?
I can't agree with you more. I mean, with all of this controversial type of decision-making we make, you know, it is a nice, nice relief to, you know, to review, you know, public art and things. And I, I gave it all to her. We've been on here many years and didn't think that it was that important back then, but Irene kept bringing it forward. And so I'm proud of her for that and thank her for that. I'm, I'm looking for more involvement with kids and I think, and I believe the Culture and Arts Commission got, sort of got involved with the fire department, with the fire prevention posters. Big response from all the schools and that. And I think maybe, you know, we can expand on that because kids are the future and, you know, they're very artistic and they're very creative, you know, and maybe, you know, some component with that. Because I see your exhibition going towards, you know, very talented, maybe older individuals. Older than kids.
We did help sponsor the first Day of the Child, Day of the Book, it's something in, I'm not saying it correctly, in the city park, which has become an annual event. So we are, we are here to sponsor and help and coordinate any events or other community programs that need a little assistance. One of the, something that we have going, coming to us is we've reached out to, East Palo Alto has a music and art program that we've asked them to come and do a presentation to us. And it's, it's sort of youth art, kind of, I believe it started with maybe tagging and turning that into an art form. So we've asked them to come and give us a presentation to see how they've managed to get their young people involved in public art in a positive manner instead of a destructive manner. Thank you.
Well, as I always say, the boards, commissions, and committees of this city are the lifeblood of this city because it's all volunteer. It's a lot of times, a lot of work, but it's a lot of fun. So I can't say enough, on behalf of the entire city of San Bruno, thank you very, very much. You've accomplished a lot. And I go along with everything you said, as long as you don't show Jaws at the 100th anniversary.
Okay. Not the 100th anniversary.
Movies in the Park, maybe.
Jaws.
But thank you very, very much.
Well, you can log on and vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reekel, did you want to make a comment? Now we're moved to item number nine, which is public comment on items not on the agenda. Is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff or investigation and/or action where appropriate? The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agenda as pursuant to state law. Mr. Reekel?
Robert Reekel, Honorable Mayor, Ruane City Manager Jackson, City Councilmember. As your trustee to the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District, I want to update you quickly on three items. Excuse me. As you and your residents may have seen today, the district began its monthly helicopter treatment over Mills Field area where they dropped pellets containing an anti-growth hormone for mosquito breeding in the vast Tulip. This hormone only affects mosquitoes. I checked with the district today and may report that there are no concerns or problems at this time for the citizens in the San Bruno area. Secondly, I want to thank City Manager Connie Jackson and the council for their review and for the phone discussion I had with City Manager Jackson that led to agenda item 10B later on on tonight's agenda concerning the LAPCO status review of the district and the LAPCO's recommendation that could eventually lead to dissolving the mosquito district, which could affect the manner in which your citizens receive abatement services at some time in the future. As this LAPCO process moves forward, both District Manager Robert Gay, who is in the audience tonight, and I will work closely with City Manager Jackson, Mayor Ruane, and the council to take every step possible to help ensure that your citizens here in San Bruno and throughout the full county continue to receive only the highest level of consistent mosquito and vector control services as they are now receiving from the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control. Should you or any San Bruno citizen or county resident have questions, the district and District Manager Gay at 344-8592 continues to be available to schedule operations personnel to take needed actions and/or answer questions. And finally, since I missed the mosquitoes may board of trustees meeting tonight, I am providing City Clerk Bonner with copies of the district's may etymology report and I will obtain copies for the June report at tomorrow's mosquito meeting and drop those off at the city clerk's office in the next few days. I'll also give her the web address. The etymology report is on the district webpage. And the district, again, thanks to City Manager Jackson, yourself as mayor, and the city council members and additional city staff for their continued support of the district in getting our information out to your citizens. And switching hats just a little bit, I'm on the Chamber of Commerce and I just want to remind everybody that every Sunday going forward, 9:00 to 1:00 at the shops at Tanforan in front of Bouders up against El Camino, we're having four hours worth of farmer's market and there's good fruits and vegetables, there's some entertainment. And in August, there's going to be a couple of special events.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on the public comment? All right, we'll move right to conduct of business. Item A is receive an oral report on the education and enforcement activities for the 2012 fireworks season.
Tonight I'll go over the education enforcement portion for police and then I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Downing for the fire report. In 2005, voters passed Measure G allowing the Sale and Use of Safe and Sane Fireworks in San Bruno. Allowing safe and sane fireworks increases volume activity for police and fire on the Fourth of July and the days leading up to the holiday, as the use of safe and sane fireworks is often intermingled with the use of illegal fireworks. The use of illegal fireworks and the misuse of safe and sane fireworks poses a risk to safety. Because of this risk, each year since the measure passed, your fire and police departments come before you and present their best efforts at an education enforcement campaign. This year was no different. The plan is designed to curb the use of illegal fireworks, to ensure that safe and sane fireworks are used in a safe manner, and to protect property from damage and prevent injury to persons. As we reported in May, and as we have done for the past several years, our education campaign includes a meeting with all of the nonprofit selling fireworks, informational materials supplied to all of the schools in San Bruno, an article in Focus, and several public service announcements to advise the public of the regulations related to safe and sane use, warnings related to the enforcement of illegal firework violations, and most of all, to use common sense and have a safe and sane Fourth of July. This year, over the eight-day reporting period, which is from June 28th to July 5th, we had 111 reports of firework violations. Last year, we had 157, so we're down about 29%. Our pre-enforcement efforts included contacting those neighborhoods where we've had previous problems with illegal firework use. What we do is we advise the residents of prior complaints. We also advise them of the penalties if we catch them, which is a $1,000 fine. This year, we responded to 190 homes and apartments. We also deployed our patrols prior to the Fourth of July to especially look for individuals using illegal fireworks. On the Fourth of July, we require all police personnel that are not on a scheduled 40-hour vacation to work with the, we also brought in officers from other jurisdictions to assist us during the peak hours of activity. We had 54 personnel working the evening of the Fourth. This included myself, command staff, officers, supervisors, dispatchers, call-takers, community service officers. We had staff strictly assigned to enforcement of firework violations and we also had staff to handle regular calls for service that come in. The teams were assigned to areas that were known for violations in previous years. And I think if I, as I've told you before, we have three beats in our residential, or the city split up into three beats. We took each of those beats and broke those down to smaller areas where we had increased prior problems. On the Fourth of July, we had 173 calls for service. Last year, we had Last year, we had 211 calls for service. So, we're, again, we're down about 20 percent. The reduction in calls was also experienced by patrols, and you could see it out there. When driving around, you could tell there was a decrease in activity, but nonetheless, there's still a lot of illegal firework use going off. And it ranged from bottle rockets, roman candles, to full-fledged mortars. I'd attribute this decrease to the Wednesday. You know, I'd like to say that our efforts are making a difference, and I think the hard work of both police, fire, and everybody that's out there does make some difference. But also, the holiday fell midweek, so the activity level was down. As I said, despite the reduction, there was still a lot of activity, and we handled 85 calls for service, I'm sorry, July 3rd, we handled 85 calls for service all day. And that's a typical day for police. On July 4th, from about 8:00 to about 11:30 at night, we handled 101 calls for service. So, that shows you that we have a day's worth of calls over that amount, just in a short window. We were busy, and it's typical for that timeframe. Again, the activity kind of tapered off about 11:00, 11:30, but nonetheless, the activity was there. Despite our best efforts and as in years past, I got calls the next day, and City Hall got calls the next day asking, "Where were you? How can we have these fireworks?" We explained to them that it's a voter-approved, but it still doesn't ease the frustration with the amount of illegal fireworks that occurs. Officers issued nine citations for dangerous firework violations, and that was the administrative citation with a $1,000 fine. Officers encountered situations where the illegal use was mixed in with safe and sane use, and it's hard to detect in trying to catch that person who's lighting that roman candle, who's lighting that mortar, because it's mixed in with the fountains that are on the street. We confiscated about 60 pounds of fireworks, and this is down about 15 pounds. Last year, we confiscated about 75 pounds. Each year, there's activity is spread out throughout the city, and I can't say that there's one area that's more prevalent to illegal use than another. This year, it seemed like there was a little more illegal use on the east side. I wish I could report that there were no injuries on the Fourth of July, but unfortunately, on the 3rd of July, we had an assault victim, and this case is still under investigation, but it appears that that assault occurred relative to the sale of illegal fireworks. While the final numbers are still being calculated, our preliminary estimates for the 2012 education and enforcement campaign appear to be under the amount that we gave to you back in May, which was $65,500. A large portion of the reduction is due because the holiday fell on a Wednesday, our police overtime expenditures were down because that's an overlap day for a lot of our personnel, so they were already working, we didn't have to bring them in on overtime. The cost associated with the education enforcement campaign will be the actual cost attributed to all of our resources that police, fire, public works expend to keep our community safe during the holiday. This effort is above what we do on a daily basis. This amount is passed on to those community organizations who sell safe and sane fireworks, and it allows us to be reimbursed for our expense. And now, we'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Dave Downing, who will give you the fire side of this.
Sure you don't want to do mine, too?
No.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Fire was also involved in the pre and post-firework sales education efforts, along with police. We inspected the booths on a daily basis. We probably doubled the amount of posters and flyers that were displayed and distributed throughout the sales time of the weeks of firework sales. As in past years, we also staffed an extra engine at Station 51. The command staff on duty was also beefed up, as Chief Don Dornell was on duty, along with Fire Marshal Allen and myself. One of the things we did during the daylight hours was we patrolled some of the high incident neighborhoods during that time as to create a, excuse me, a presence and a deterrent. On the Fourth of July, the emergency calls were actually down. We had one trash fire at San Bruno Park and two other holiday-related calls that engines respond to and were canceled because the residents had already put out fires that were safe and sane fireworks had reignited, but they'd put them out, so they canceled the response. There were two other medical calls during the evening that were not related to holiday festivities. All in all, it was a pretty quiet Fourth of July in regards to fire-related responses. One correction from Chief Telford's report was there was actually 61 pounds, instead of 60 pounds, of fireworks packaged and ready for disposal at a collection point in San Mateo in August. And that pretty much concludes the report for fire and police. If you have any questions, we're glad to answer them.
Good. Thank you for all of your work. Any questions for the chiefs?
I just want to say that, you know, the efforts are out there and they're being felt, and as someone that works in a booth and selling the safe and sane fireworks, you know, the public is aware. And we do explain to them what they can and can't do, and, you know, and especially if they don't live in San Bruno, that it is only illegal in San Bruno Pacifica. But it just frustrates me to no end when I drive, even in my own neighborhood, and seeing so-called responsible adults that are breaking the law. And I know that, you know, maybe one day they'll get caught and they'll have to pony up the $1,000, but those are the people that, you know, and they know who they are. You know, they just feel that they can, you know, they can do, you know, break the law in that fashion. It just, it's very frustrating, you know, because we get blamed for it.
Reekel?
Very quickly, I rode along for a couple hours with the police chief and was at the briefing and wanted to, once again, thank the public safety staff and the city staff that obviously has to do the cleanup for their efforts. I would probably concur with the chief that it'd be on a Wednesday, probably assisted in the decrease. I would also say that Wednesday night wasn't probably the warmest, kindest evening as far as being out, and that may have helped attributed to it as well. But, once again, it's a unique sight to see so many folks on staff, but it's also a reassuring one. And I know, because I was there and the chief was assured to make sure I went to every section of the community to get a sense of how it was going. And they are driving, they are there, they are responding as fast as the calls come in. So, I want to thank both the police and fire and the staff for their efforts this Fourth of July.
Carolyn?
Every year, through years, we've had trouble up in the Pacific Heights area. Somebody sets off the worst things, I don't know what they are, cherry bombs, what'd you call them, I forget the big thing you just mentioned, but whatever it is, it rocks the house. I mean, it's that bad. And I got it this year. Somebody set it right near my house. And I called the police department, and I don't know if it's a coincidence or not, but after I called the police department, there was not another sound in the neighborhood. So, I don't know if they cruised up there or what happened. But the next night, we got five in a row, boom, 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 boom. I guess they must, if they couldn't get them off on the Fourth, they decided to get rid of them on the Fifth. But I want to thank you. It's the first year I've ever been able to go to sleep at night. Usually, they go until noon, midnight, or 1:00 in the morning. So, something happened that made a difference this year, and I appreciate it. I'm sure my neighbors did, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, chiefs, and thank your entire department and staff, please. Item 10B, authorize the mayor to execute a letter to the San Mateo County Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, supporting the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District in the Sphere of Influence Review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I've just distributed a updated version of the letter that is in front of you tonight for consideration to LAFCO relative to the item that Mr. Reekel addressed in his public comment, having to do with the Mosquito and Vector Control District in their Sphere of Influence and Municipal Service Review through LAFCO. The, as you probably know, although the city has had very limited interaction with the agency that's known as LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO is the agency that is responsible in this county and in all other counties throughout the state of California for review and action on matters having to do with jurisdictional boundaries of municipalities, counties, and special districts within the counties. And those matters include incorporations, annexations, consolidations, dissolutions, and the like. As part of its regular responsibility, LAFCO adopts spheres of Influence as plans for the probable boundaries of cities and special districts. And in the fulfillment of its responsibility, LAFCO, in this county and others, is responsible for completing periodic municipal service reviews of the agencies within its, within the county. LAFCO has taken up a municipal service review and a sphere of influence review for the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District. The, LAFCO has generated a review report that is quite thorough in its analysis of many aspects of the district's operations, and it has set a public hearing for July 18th to consider the proposed determinations that that review report contained. The municipal service review itself is an analysis of the public services in which certain determinations are made in several areas, including the planned and present capacity of the public facilities and adequacy of public services, the financial ability of the agency to provide its required services, its accountability for community service needs, its governmental structure, and its operational efficiencies. In this particular case, the LAFCO review has determined that the Mosquito and Vector Control District is effectively providing mosquito and vector control services that best meet the needs, the public health and safety needs of San Mateo County residents. The review notes in some detail that the law that allowed the formation of mosquito and vector control districts specifies, and this is in state law, that the board be comprised of a voter/resident of each city in the county and one appointed by the County Board of Supervisors. So, in the case of San Mateo County, the statute requires that the board be comprised of 21 members, one each from the 20 cities and one from, one appointed by the Board of Supervisors. The LAFCO review has considered this feature of law and has presented a proposed determination that the governance structure and the size of the board, again, in our case, 21 members, and the method of appointment by individual city councils, constrains the accountability, the visibility, and responsiveness that the district can provide to the health and safety needs of the public compared, for example, to that which is provided by a directly-elected County Board of Supervisors, city council, or a directly-elected special district board. The review further concludes that the district's administration and governing board duplicate administration and governance that could be provided by the county of San Mateo in the same way that the county currently provides other county environmental health programs. In response to this review, as I indicated, and as Mr. Reekel indicated earlier, the district is seeking support from cities who are represented on the Mosquito and Vector Control District Board in this process to weigh in with respect to our own observations about the district's accountability, the district's service, and the district's governance. I would note that, as identified in the review report, that in addition to the normal periodic municipal service review function that LAFCO provides, the, this particular review was undertaken, at least in part, in response to concerns that have arisen related to the alleged embezzlement issue which occurred in the district's finance operations earlier this year. Or rather, that was identified a number of months ago, that occurred over a prior couple of years. Again, the report identifies that the district is performing successfully and effectively in meeting its charge to, among other things, take actions to prevent the spread of West Nile virus, as well as to generally protect the public health and safety related to mosquito-borne diseases. In the area of accountability, as I've indicated, the report indicates that there are concerns about the statutory governance structure that is in effect and its accessibility and accountability to members of the public. And in the, in the area of response to the alleged embezzlement, the report does identify that the district has taken and is continuing to take the necessary and effective actions that were recommended by outside special expert advisors, and has taken the situation seriously and responded appropriately. Would also note, for the council's consideration, that a previous municipal service review of the Mosquito and Vector Control District occurred in 2003. And at that time, as you may recall, the district's boundaries did not cover the entire county of San Mateo, but terminated at the northern end of the county, at the northern limits of the city of Milbreit. That review resulted in a determination that, in fact, the boundaries of the district should be expanded to cover the entire territory of San Mateo County, including city of San Bruno and those to the north of us. And that determination was, in fact, implemented in our city, and the others have been part of the district for these number of years since 2003. Again, the LAFCO board will hold a public hearing on the proposed determinations that are outlined in the review report on July 18th. And again, the district is seeking comment and support by cities that are part of the district on the proposed determinations and actions that might result from the LAFCO board accepting the review report and its determinations. And specifically, as, again, Mr. Reekel indicated, among those determinations is, are actions that would lead potentially to the dissolution of the district and the absorption of the current responsibilities and funds now flowing to the district for its operations, the transfer of those to the county of San Mateo, presumably to the Environmental Health Department. You have before you a letter that was suggested by the district with some modifications that I made to better address the city's particular perspective. It's in front of you tonight with the recommendation that you consider it, that you consider authorizing the mayor to execute that letter on behalf of the entire city council. And before I turn it over to your questions, I would just note for the record that district board members are seeking this support from throughout the county, but at this time, with a little bit of research, staff is not aware of the status of any other city's action other than that of the city of San Carlos, which has taken a, an action, took an early action, and is continuing to take action to support the LAFCO position. So, at this time, I do not have information that would allow me to advise you about So at this time, I do not have information that would, uh, allow me to advise you about what other cities are doing, uh, based on, uh, requests that they are receiving from the district. So with that, I would be happy to answer your questions and note that, uh, Mr. Raichel and Mr. Gay are in the audience, and I'm sure they would be happy to take any questions directed to them as well.
Any questions of staff or members of the district?
I just, and it's very complicated to me, but, uh, I think reading the, I believe it was the consultant, the, the private consultant that, uh, wrote the lengthy letter to, uh, in response to the LAFCO, uh, study. This is all a result of the embezzlement. Is that, is that something that, you know, we can all, that is clear? Is that this is not necessarily something that LAFCO has decided they're going to review or is something, for some other reason, uh, to, uh, to scrutinize the district? But this is because, you know, uh, namely, San Carlos asked for the grand jury to study it and then, uh, you know, and then, uh, as a, as a result of, as a result of the embezzlement. Has not, I mean, there was not, there has not been any criticism that we know of to the performance of the district as it, you know, as, you know, as far as, you know, their task and, you know, and dealing with health and safety in the county.
Yeah, I'll answer the question to the best of my knowledge, and then perhaps, uh, Mr. Raichel and Mr. Gay, uh, could elaborate. LAFCO does have the authority and the jurisdiction to call for a municipal service review. It would not be unusual for the LAFCO to do so, um, without, uh, an, a, an incident or other, um, uh, encouragement. So it's difficult to say whether it is, whether this particular review was prompted primarily by the alleged embezzlement or, um, and/or whether it was time. The, uh, report, I, I believe, does, is clear in its preamble that among the concerned, or among the reasons that the municipal service review was undertaken were the concerns that related from the incident. There is nothing in my, um, understanding or experience or exposure to the district, nor that, um, I'm aware of from previous, uh, city involvement with the district that would suggest a, any concerns that we have. And in fact, um, as I, I indicated in the written report, but did not, uh, say in the oral report tonight, uh, Mr. Raichel, I believe, has been a particularly effective representative for you as the city council and for our community as a whole in that he takes these responsibilities very seriously. He is very aggressive in providing information, uh, both to you, uh, to staff, as well as making that available and encouraging us to make it available to members of the public generally, just as he did tonight about the activities of the district and its, um, uh, presence in and around San Bruno. So, uh, I would say the answer, there was a long-winded way of saying, uh, yes to your question. We are not aware of any particular issues or concerns in terms of the district's performance of its basic responsibilities. And in fact, I would go further to say that, um, this city, I think, has been particularly well-served by the district.
Mr. Gay?
I think that was, yeah. I think that was stated very well. Uh, you're correct, initially, the first report by LAFCO in May was about the embezzlement. And we went through a great deal of education of LAFCO, uh, showing them all of the activities that the district has taken. Uh, we went through a, a lengthy investigation by the district attorney's office, the San Mateo County Sheriff's Investigative Office, uh, of the staff and the embezzlement. We had a forensic audit that was done by C.G. Yellenberg for the entire period that the two individuals, uh, were on board. Uh, those two individuals are now in, in jail. Uh, they've gone through the pre-trial hearing, and the rest of it will start occurring here pretty quickly. Uh, the district has made all the corrective actions that were, uh, suggested by Dr. Peter Hughes, who's, uh, as you well know, Director of Internal Audit for the Orange County, and he was recommended, of course, by the Controller's Office, Bob Adler. Uh, the district has, has made auditorial changes of the auditor, they've made changes to the policies, uh, built internal control manuals, I mean, everything has been corrected. Uh, with that being stated, uh, LAFCO then changed gears with their final report that they just put out, and now it has basically nothing to do with the embezzlement that occurred. It now has to do with the structure of the board that they're attacking. And it does conflict with everything LAFCO stated in their 2003, uh, sphere of influence municipal service review, as, as you well know, that we've gone through. So we're kind of at a loss on, on what, why they're making this recommendation of dissolving the district. Uh, your district has been killing mosquitoes for 108 years. We've been doing this. Uh, we do it incredibly well. Our facilities are state-of-the-art, and, and maybe that's the problem. We operate in the black. We have a reserve account that allows us to, uh, address emergencies that are going on in the county. Uh, and maybe because we do have a small reserve, uh, maybe that's why the county's looking at dissolving the district. Uh, we honestly, uh, do not know why the county has taken this position of our large board. It's mandated by state law. There's nothing we can do about our board and the size of our board. Uh, we've, uh, we're meeting with all the LAFCO commissioners and all of our legislators. On our board is an incredibly effective board. Uh, one of our best members is standing right here, Robert Raichel. He is active on our finance committee. He's at, he's Chair of our policy committee. He's been the one that has been redrafting policies for the district. Uh, he's the one that helped with the selecting of the new auditor for the district. We have Dr. Scott Smith. He's an infectious disease doctor from Stanford University. We have veterinarians on our board that allow us to get into the veterinary community to do all the work with diseases associated with animals. We have, uh, other board members that are involved with, uh, you know, all Foster City, Rick Wykoff, as you know, Rick Wykoff is on our board. Donna Rutherford, another, uh, prior council member from East Palo Alto is on our board. We have an excellent board, uh, which we've been trying to explain to LAFCO that dissolving our board is not going to give you better governance. If you take this program and you dissolve it and you move it into the county, it will dissolve and go away. The reason why we know that is because the county environmental health dissolved their vector program and gave it to us. Yes. So we, we know that this program, if it goes to the county, it will be gone, and you'll never have a district again in the future. So that's what has us concerned, and we're looking right now because I have basically 105 city council members that have direct access to this district. Uh, you have one trustee, one person between yourselves and, and our district, and we will provide, and we're providing incredible service for all the cities right now. And, uh, if it goes to the county, uh, you will not have that access any longer to your district. And I think that's a big concern for us as a district because of all the efforts we put in. Right now, we have positive West Nile virus on the border of Redwood City and Woodside, uh, which has us very concerned. So, and we have increased levels of Lyme disease. And we know we have increased levels of hantavirus and plague right here on San Bruno Mountain. So we have a lot of activity that's going on, and we feel like all of this LAFCO experience that we're going through is taking time away from what we should be doing. So we're looking to the cities that if you want to continue with this program, that the way it is, we really need everybody to step up to the plate and support it, and we really thank your city for the work that you're doing in this effort. And we're happy to answer any questions at any time. And I know Robert Raichel is reporting to you on a routine basis.
Thank you very much. I just speak as the mayor, saying that I know you as a board have had challenges, and that goes along with the territory. But you're, you've addressed them and continue to address them. But I think, um, any challenges the, the county has in absorbing this far outweigh anything you can, you can accomplish. So, um, I would ask this city council to give me permission and authorize me to sign this letter in support of, uh, in support of the district. Uh, why don't you make it?
I'll, I'll make that.
And I'll second.
Here's a motion and a second, uh, to authorize the mayor to sign the letter as presented on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
And thank you, and Robert, thank you for all your efforts.
Yes.
You represent and help the city a lot.
Item 10C, receive a report regarding street sweeping operations and related parking restrictions.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, provide a brief preamble, you may be, um, curious as to why the Human Resources Director is being asked to deliver a report about, um, street sweeping and, uh, parking restrictions. And that is, that is because, uh, I, because this is an important, uh, policy issue that has, uh, numbers that, has, it requires the involvement of a number of different departments. I asked Tammy to coordinate this project, and, um, at this point, I feel that she has the, the best overall view. We certainly have other staff that are available to answer questions if you have more detailed questions, including, um, Gino Quinn on her Streets Supervisor, um, Clara, Public Services Director, and, and of course, the police chief. So that will turn it over to Tammy.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. At the June 12th meeting, the City Council directed staff to review the street sweeping program along with, including those streets with parking restrictions. For the benefits of public health, a street sweeping program is necessary to prevent pollutants from entering the bay and to prevent low air quality from dust. Street sweeping also assists with removing debris and leaves that may collect in storm drain, uh, inlets to contribute, uh, to local flooding and property damage. Parking restrictions were originally implemented in the city due to areas that are low in elevation, making streets more prone to flooding. Also included in, uh, the criteria is looking at neighborhood density, types of trees that were prone to shedding their leaves, size and space of the garage, um, size of the setback, and width of the street contributed to the need for parking restrictions in certain areas of the city. Every street in San Bruno is clean twice a month. Parking restrictions were enforced in order to be able to thoroughly sweep the streets in certain areas. So parking restrictions through the commercial and industrial area of San Bruno is swept from eight, six o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock, um, in the morning. And then most residential areas are swept, um, and the parking restrictions enforced from eight to 10, and some areas, 10 to 12. Parking restrictions are enforced in most areas east of the Al Camino, from the north end of the city to the, uh, southern end of San Juan Avenue. This area has, has had a long history of flooding, and removal of leaves and debris from gutters by street sweeping has assisted to prevent flooding. Many streets are narrow, and the majority of the homes have one-car garages that contribute to an increase in parked cars on the streets. Parking restrictions allow the street sweeper to thoroughly clean the streets and keep the storm drains clear. Parking, um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add one other part. Some of the concerns expressed by the, um, expressed to the police department staff have been that vehicles receive a citation after the sweeper has passed the location. Parking enforcement officers attempt to stay ahead of the sweeper. However, restrictions extend, uh, for the entire duration posted on the sign in the location, just in case the street sweeper has to go around twice. Parking restrictions do not extend, um, to streets west of the Al Camino because there is not, um, the same elevation and drainage issues, and with limited exceptions, the streets are generally wider and less congested than the, those east of Al Camino. There are two areas on the west of Al Camino that have parking restrictions, which is the 280 Overpass, um, which is at Crestmore and, and Crystal Springs, which requires street sweeping every two months, and then Shelter Creek, which requires street sweeping twice a year. If the city council would like further consideration and review of the street sweeping program, staff has identified, um, areas in the city for changes. I'm available to answer any questions you have.
Okay, any questions of staff at this time?
Is there any study or any information as to how, how effective street sweeping is, is on the west side? Because I know in my neighborhood, you know, the guy's in and out, and most, majority of the time, he's in the middle of the street, you know, because there's only, there's only so much you can do when there's parked cars.
So certain areas of, of the west side, um, it's not as, as maybe, um, beneficial to those, um, that have areas where there's, there's leaves, um, that are, uh, trees that are more prone to leaf shedding or, or narrower streets. So, um, it depends on certain areas of the west side and also in certain areas on the east side.
But it's the policy now that the street sweeper goes up and down every street of San Bruno.
Yes, twice, twice, um, twice a month.
Twice a month. So my question is, maybe we oughta, you know, look at the west side because it's, in my, in my opinion, it's ineffective in some areas. It's not, even if there are, you know, leaf, you know, buildup or whatever, you know, if you're not getting the cars out of the way, and especially at six o'clock in the morning, you know, people are still in bed, you know, so they're not gone, so the cars are not going to be moved. I mean, I've always had this quote, you know, this whole concern about the west side. It's like, why are we even attempting it? Because, you know, the guys, I mean, the tires are just getting worn down from going in and out, you know, and we're not getting an effective street sweeping. I have no worries, I have no problems with the, with the reasons why, you know, it's, uh, it's, you know, the street sweeping is programmed on the east side, you know?
Anyone else? Carolyn?
You came down here to call for remarks, but you're hitting us a couple of subjects here tonight that are very dear to my heart.
Carolyn, hang on a minute, hang on a sec.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I was on closer. I've long talked about the street sweeping problems. I am, I'm up again in the west side, and the cars do not move particularly down there by the apartments. They're lined up down Susan Drive. Those people don't get their street cleaned. You can see the street sweeper pattern going down like this. Plus, some of the people don't move their garbage cans from the street instead of putting it up on the sidewalk where they can get to, you know, where the trucks can come along. I had to move two of them this week because somebody left them in the street, and the street sweeper came along, and I ran out and moved him quickly so that he could do the street. But then it causes blockage in the, in the drains. And I'm constantly over there on a couple of the streets, I go out and clean those drains myself, just to get the stuff, the water running properly. So I, to me, it's a waste of money to pay somebody, I, I'm so with Ken on what he's saying. It's a waste of money, having somebody go and they're not doing the job, not because they don't want to do the job, but because they don't get cooperation from the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Glasscock, North San Anselmo. I received a copy of this, um, this afternoon, so I didn't even have a chance to go through it, um, thoroughly. But, um, I'd like to go through this point by point, not right now, but, um, prepare like a rebuttal, I guess, because I guess, like, the general, um, gist of, of these documents were kind of, um, it was kind of a, uh, I understand why the streets are being swept, but then there was like a cost analysis and all this other stuff, and I just, I've never brought anything before city council before, so, um, I'd like, I, I don't know if this goes on to public, to a public hearing or, or if I can have a chance to repair or to prepare something, you know, with, with, um, um, some points that I was able to pick out being a, an east side resident. So I guess that's all I have. Thanks.
All right, to staff, uh, is this, uh, under the purview of the, the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee? Is that where we should send this, uh, for further review? Um, I, I think that, uh, you know, this has to be revisited, not so much in, in eliminating street sweeping on the east side, because we have had a lot of problems over the years, and I think some of those have been corrected with the, with the street sweeping. But we do have an awful lot of, uh, very narrow streets on the west side, too, that probably should, uh, um, you know, be addressed a little more aggressively. And I don't know if there's some way to get, uh, get the word out to everyone else, whether it's in a water bill or, or cable bill or whatever it happens to be, um, that these are your days and we- your days, and we do anticipate that you will get your car off of the street for four hours, or whatever it happens to be. I think, I think we have to look at this a little, a little closer, or a lot closer.
Staff is prepared to work with the City Council in whatever way you believe would be effective to consider the issues further. Just on the, on the topic of public information regarding sweeping on the west, on the west side, we do place information in the water bill from time to time that shows a map of the schedule for street sweeping and encourages residents to be aware and to move their vehicles, as well as providing information on the city website. That's, that is admittedly a softer approach than obviously the one that is used on the east side. This is a, in, in general terms, a matter of city policy that is addressing itself to some geographic and operational issues. If it is the City Council's desire to revisit or to have us review further, whether operationally we would identify considerations that you might want to have, or areas where you might want to revisit, whether no parking on street sweeping day is a policy that you might want to extend. We can certainly come back with some additional information about where staff views that as being something that you might want to consider. What we've tried to do tonight is to provide a, a more global overview of, of the types of issues and considerations, and what it would take to expand the program citywide. I was actually surprised with the high cost of signage that it, that would be, would be incurred to, to place the program citywide. But there may be intermediate steps or pilot projects that we could bring back to you that you might want to consider if your, if your interest is a more effective street, maximizing the effectiveness of the street sweeping program.
I would like the Infrastructure Committee to get involved with staff on this, and that would be Mr. Medina, who actually lives on the east side, and Vice Mayor Vera.
Great idea.
Okay.
Chair, I was going to say that we happen to have a, there was a, an event in the neighborhood on Saturday, and so I took that opportunity, that shouldn't have been, and was starting to ask them, what do you think? Before you eat, before you drink, let me ask you this question about street sweeping. But all the folks I spoke to in the neighborhood felt that they would not want to see it go away. They feel it provides an essential service because of the trees, the parking. It also affords an opportunity to ensure the cars are moving, because sometimes cars will be abandoned, and that is just a opportunity in which to get them marked and begin the process. Some do feel, just in their own sense, it is punitive to them, though it's not addressed to the rest of the, the community. Some don't favor that. So, that was somewhat split. For what the Vice Mayor was saying, in essence, if the case is that the street sweeper, like Carolyn said, is going up the street, maybe they only need to do it one side, one time a month in certain areas and save that, that cost. It does seem to be a waste of time, honestly, if all they can do is go up the center of the street. Let's be honest, some streets in this community on the west side do have more open, they don't have the trees in the front yards as much, or certain type of trees. They maybe don't have that need, as maybe flat levels in the east side do. So, I think we need to look at the whole perspective, because just to put signs on, and I think that was the thing I heard Saturday, just to put a sign in front of everybody's street, just to do it to do it, doesn't make sense. It's a lot of money, it's a lot of staff time, and so we want to think smart, think outside the box, and really revisit and refocus on this, this whole street sweeping.
Okay, so we have our task ahead of us, and just to the members of the public that brought this forward, thank you very much, and there won't be any action tonight, other than we're going to look at this a lot closer through staff and with the council subcommittee, and we will be bringing this back. So, thank you for your, for your interest, I appreciate that.
And can we make sure that, Sarah, if you, you say Sarah, if we can get notify, if she can get notified with the appropriate notification, staff report in, ahead of schedule, so that she has time to digest it, discuss it, and if you want to have a block party and get all the neighbors, get, get some feedback? I don't bring in them all, but I'm just saying, get some feedback. But, but just so she has adequate time, because I feel bad that she just received it today.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. Irene?
I just have two things. I'm kind of astonished that there is 400 to 500 citations per month, and this is repeated. It's like, don't think, is it the same people, or is it people who forget? I mean, that's an astonishing amount of people for a relatively small area that happens every, that happens on a monthly basis. So, maybe there's something that we're not doing to educate them? I don't know. So, could that be something else you look at? And then, the other thing is what Ken was saying, and I, too, have noticed that sometimes the street sweeper just goes down the middle of the street, and especially at places like Genevin, at the corners where the storm drains are vital to be cleared, and they're not because of cars being parked around them. So, maybe it's the time of day, maybe six o'clock in the morning isn't the best time. Maybe it should be noon on a weekday when more cars are away from their homes, you know, people are at work, and there's more space, fewer cars. Anyway, could, could.
Good. I think those are the things we're going to look at.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item 10D is receive a report on Measure A Highway Program Cycle One Funding and Adopt a Resolution Supporting the Widening of State Route 35 from Interstate 280 to Sneed Lane Project and Submitting an Application for Measure A Highway Program Cycle One Funding for the Project.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I have Tina Sheng with me, who basically did the hard work of, and developing the application for these two grant programs. Back in eighty, in eighty-eight, and then consequently in oh-four, the residents of Semiteau County passed a help send sale tax, countywide sale tax, to address the transportation need in the county. This call for projects is the first call for projects under this new Measure A funding, and is for a total of $104 million. This $104 million is a combination of the old Measure A and the new Measure A funding. The old Measure A had a certain list of projects, and only just those projects were eligible for Measure A funding. And the new Measure A program is, was developed the same way, has a certain list of projects, which projects are eligible for this funding. The new Measure A also has a new component, has a so-called supplementary type of projects included in the funding, that even some projects can apply for this new Measure A funding if they have regional importance, and will make a big difference in addressing region-wide transportation issues. The projects under consideration tonight, SR-35 and also 380, are, are not included in the old Measure A list, but they are included in the new Measure A list. That's why these two projects are brought before you, that this is an opportunity, the first opportunity, for local agencies to propose improvement of, on this, of these state facilities, and to sponsor improvement of this major transportation corridors. Why improving SR-35 really is important for the city, as you are aware of the widening right now, SR-35 from Sneed Lane to the connecting point to 280, going down from Ford Lane to Tulane, causing congestion during peak commute times. The department and the city received multiple complaints for residents for spill-over traffic to residential streets as a result of those congestion during those peak time periods. And also, reason why this widening of this section of 35 is included in our general plan of, also one of our stated transportation policy goals. The purpose of this project would be to widen then SR-35 from Sneed to the connecting point to 280. The recommendation is, and to include in the grant application, all of the phases of development of the project, the preliminary phase, the design phase, and also the construction of the project itself. Is the intent for both of these projects to co-sponsor the improvement of these two corridors with the city of South San Francisco, having a joint interest expressed by the city of South San Francisco, and also by our city. 380 was raised, the concern of, safety concern on 380 is a upcoming concern expressed by our residents. Also, the concern was raised by the residents of South City, South San Francisco also, and was, congestion concern was, were raised also by the agencies assessing the after the fact study after the implementation of the mirroring on 280. Caltrans conducted a after study after, six months after the implementation of the mirroring on 280, and their conclusion was that the implementation of the mirroring on 280 is not as effective as could have been due to the choke point caused by 380. That's why you say high level of interest for South City from a congestion relief, relief point of view, and also from a public safety point of view. The purpose, this for 380, this would be a feasibility assessment, a study, only just to assess what would be alternative solution to address the safety issue and the congestion The cost for widening 3, 35 would be 14 million of dollars, that's estimated, but of course, planning level, high level of estimate at this time, and would take probably seven, eight years to implement the project. If you are considering this application, you are supportive of this recommendation, then you will have to pass a resolution to support the application, this being a, a capital improvement project, not just study, and require, based on the procedure, to have a resolution of support passed by the sponsor agency. The cost for, the cost for the feasibility study on 380 is estimated to be 500,000, and this is the request included in our, in our grant application. The financial implication of this application is, in essence, the staff time required by the city staff to be part of a collaborative process with TA and Caltrans, developing for the development of those projects. I did forgot to emphasize in my oral presentation that the intent is for South City of San Bruno and City of South San Francisco to co-sponsor this application, but the Transportation Authority would be the implementing agency and the lead agency for the development of all of the phases of the project. Our effort would be to collaborate and provide information and support and advocacy for the project throughout the development of the project. That staff time is estimated to be, for the duration of the development of the SR-35 project, to be around 360,000, which represent around 2.5% from the total cost, and would be a much lower estimate, 2,500 for the 380, considering that this is a study and not design and implementation, and is much shorter duration. Still unclear if the cost of the staff time could be included or not to be included in the application itself, and if TA could reimburse the city for the staff time. This is how I said, the first call for project, and TA still working on finalizing and further refining and defining the program itself, and they couldn't give us a definite answer if staff time would be eligible for reimbursement or not. The next step of the, if you are supportive of both of these recommendations, then, based on the existing schedule in August or September, TA would have a preliminary decision, and is their intent to take for the board approval, probably in September of, or October of this year. Both of us are available for any question that you might have.
Any questions of staff?
I'm just curious, this, these are, these are state highways.
Correct.
Correct. And, you know, we're.
We're, we're familiar with the challenges of, you know, improvements on Al Camino, but is, is the state, is Caltrans, you know, in favor of these improvements? Or is it something that the city alone, these cities alone, local agencies have to, have to promote?
The answer is yes. That certainly, even at the preliminary discussion, Caltrans and TA are basically the implementing and the lead agency. The local agencies, both of our cities, San Bruno and South San Francisco, will provide in essence, sponsor support, advocacy, and of course, providing information, and working with them, developing the project. But the lead agency will be, and is proposed to be, TA, and also working with Caltrans, absolutely, and they will be responsible for the design and the implementation of this project. San Bruno, neither San Bruno or South City has the. San Bruno, Nider San Bruno or South City has the staff required for the implementation of this type of project and the size of the project.
Well, all the, all the improvements that we've, that we've experienced, you know, mainly on the, you know, the mirroring lights and all those improvements along the highways, those, those were instigated by Caltrans, by the state, and I'm just wondering, you know, the county should be, you know, you know, one of our proponents also.
This is a new program and the first time, based on this new Measure A, is this sponsorship included in the development and application of any project under this new highway program. And was some discussion, who is the most appropriate agency? That was the first consideration when this idea even came up, of the need or the opportunity to apply for these two projects, based on our internal discussion, including with the city manager, to make sure that it's not the city who is taking on the burden, the city doesn't have the capacity to really take this kind of projects on. But was a discussion of the county, or the TA would be the best agency to take the lead on this project, was concluded that TA has the most appropriate expertise and structure available to really lead this kind of project in collaboration, of course, with Caltrans. Both of these projects, how I mentioned, are included on the new Measure A list, that really means that even before us expressing interest for the support of this project, they were already on, included on the new Measure A list, based on the deficiencies established on both of those facilities by Caltrans itself.
I guess we're in the game. We're in the game for the time being.
I think if I could just add, your, your observation is correct. The city has experienced extended timeframes for review and approval of its projects for, in the, in the state right-of-way, on El Camino in particular, our median project as one example. This is an entirely different process and a different means of generating support for the project, so I, I think that we would not expect to receive, to experience that same kind of difficulty, but still, there are numbers of projects in the Measure A program, and there is no certainty that our advocacy for these particular projects would result in a successful outcome. This is just a very, this is a very first step, simply to generate an assessment of whether there is interest within the local community, so there is quite a ways to go if either or both of these projects are, are actually going to go anywhere.
Or, or even I might add that maybe not the whole project like SR thirty-five will be approved, maybe only just the first phase of SR thirty-five will be, will be approved under this first call-for-project, and maybe then will become eligible for the subsequent opportunities for application. The size of those upcoming program will be much less. The estimate is probably between ten and fifteen million a year, and they didn't make a final decision if call-for-project will be on yearly basis or by yearly basis.
Carol?
I jump, I jump up and down here, but I forgot a bum leg at the moment, but this is another subject that's very near and dear to my heart. In fact, I even got Caltrans to move the no-passing sign up because it was hidden behind a tree, and unfortunately, that hasn't done a darn bit of good. My own son is, was involved in an accident there years ago, so I feel very strongly about it. And I might note that I recently wrote a letter to Mr. Roadshow in the San Mateo County Times, and I asked him, when were any plans for that widening down there? And his answer to me was, Caltrans had no plans for it for at least twenty years, which is not in my lifetime probably, so I don't know, if you guys can move it up, it would be just wonderful. I do have a question, though, in regards to this. I'm wondering, why is only South San Francisco considered in helping on this? Pacifica uses that road just as much, coming both from the north and coming from the west through Skyline College, and of course, Daly City heavily uses that road too. It strikes me that it's more than two cities that should be footing the bill on this. I wouldn't be surprised if there's San Franciscans coming down here too, but believe me, it's a, it's a mess.
Thank you. Any more discussion or action by the council?
To the chair.
I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask. So I'm clear, the action now would be to allow the city to participate or to apply for the funds. How much do we anticipate in spending prior to being approved for, for any, any Measure A funds? So, I mean, we would have to expend some amount of funds, just to get to the point. It seems, I mean, there's some things that are being laid out here, but how much are we actually going to expend before we know if we get any funding?
Well, that is very limited, basically just Tina's time and my time, which is very, very valuable.
Priceless.
But, let's say, dollar figure would be a few thousand dollar per time. The application, let's say, shared approach, South City took on the burden of developing the application for three eighty, and the city provided the letter of support for that project, and then San Bruno developed the application for the thirty-five, and South City provided the letter of support for thirty-five, just to minimize the time needed from both agencies.
Okay. And there seems to be a lot of support for, for the widening, but I'm, I'm wondering, are there any anticipated negative effects about maybe increased speeds, possibility of more accidents, and people turning onto San Bruno Avenue if they're making a left across more lanes? Have we looked at any, any of that?
At this time, this was a very, very short time even for the application itself. This is a very high planning level of application. All of those will be assessed in the first phase of the feasibility and preliminary study for the widening itself. Always widening a road will have some consequence of increasing, possibly increasing speed, but all of those informations will be addressed in the first phase of the project. And if, after the development of the first phase of projects, based on, on the available information, the city will feel that they are more negative than positive, or will be too concerned about the negatives of the project, certainly will be an opportunity for the city to withdraw our support for the project itself.
Okay. And we'll have that opportunity before we get into the big dollar figures.
Just to clarify, this, the funding never will be intended to come to the city. Probably the funding will go directly to TA, as the lead agency, and the city just will support and collaborate on the project, but probably the funding will go directly to TA, and is only just a matter of question if they will include the reimbursement for our time or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Irene?
Thank you. Carolyn and I must be on the same wavelength tonight. I was also thinking about Pacifica and also Skyline College or the Community College District. When I was taking my kid back and forth to the college, that, there's a lot of traffic generated by the college that blocks up that. Now, is that, we haven't done that because of time?
Very good point. A draft letter is already developed for the college to give us their support, and we'll be, our intent to approach them this week. The time was very short, yes, Pacifica and Daly City would make a logical choice, and I think even if later on, probably a, even after the application, if those agency will provide us with a letter of support, will add to the strength and the power of the application itself, and I will certainly follow up based on your direction.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion or action for the council?
Oh, did you, is that a...
This is a resolution.
Oh, introduce the resolution. I'm sorry. Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Our last item under conduct of business is receive a report and adopt the resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with the county of San Mateo for collection of special assessments and authorizing the county of San Mateo to place a special assessment on five oh two San Felipe Avenue for unpaid municipal code violation of abatement costs.
Was it planned for Mayor to go last?
Yes, my, thank you and good evening. As the city council knows, the code enforcement program is a complaint-driven program that primarily responds to building code as well as nuisance violations within the city. One such violation that we started to get complaints about several years ago was at five oh two San Felipe, which is the subject of this report. It was a case that involved overgrown vegetation, neighbor, worse, neighbors were complaining that the vegetation was beyond the legal limits, and also trash and debris was starting to accumulate in the front yard. We started, as we normally did, sending a notice to the property owner, who actually does not live at the home, but owns a second home in San Bruno on Cypress. Unfortunately, the property owner did not respond to that notice, nor second and third notices that included citations. In all, the property owner's received six notices and has not responded to any of them. It is very rare that someone doesn't respond to these or the citations, but when it does get to a point, the city does have the option to abate the nuisance with city crews or with city contractors. We've only done this three times in the past three years. The first time was a home on Acacia that we spent several thousand dollars on, including two abatements, as well as a number of fines and code enforcement time. Fortunately, in that case, a court had appointed a receiver because the property owner was not found fit to handle all, everything associated with the property, and the city eventually got their money when the home was sold in an escrow, we received those funds. In this case, the property owner did not respond to our notice to abate, so we did hire a landscape contractor, who went out there about a year ago and abated the nuisance, removed the vegetation, as well as the trash and debris from the front yard. The next step is to basically send something called, it's basically a invoice, a statement of claim is the, is the legal name, that outlines everything that's owed to the city. In this case, there were fines that were owed to the city, the actual abatement costs, as well as code enforcement oversight related to that abatement cost, came out to about three thousand dollars. Once again, the property owner did not receive. In this case, we also, and a number, two times in fact, we stopped by the home on Cypress, and they were not home, they were not, they did not answer the door there as well. The property owner, so the next step, when someone does not pay the abatement costs, does not respond to notices, the city has the right to place a special assessment on the property. And what the special assessment is, is instructing the county to record the amount owes, and that would, the city would get paid through the, the property tax bills, they would actually see it on the property tax bills. In order to do this, you need to adopt two resolutions. The first resolution is for the, to enter into a contract with the county, which essentially says the county will recover these costs for the city for a nominal fee. In this case, it's about a dollar thirty per parcel, and it's waived if it's under ten dollars total, so the fee would be waived in this circumstance. And the second part of the resolution is actually for placing it on five oh two San Felipe, the, the total amount. You'll notice that the total amount is not the three thousand dollars that was billed, and that's because we cannot recover fines through the special assessment process, it's not allowed by state law, but we can recover the actual abatement costs, as well as the code enforcement oversight time related to that abatement cost. So with that, I could take any questions from the council.
See, I only see one resolution here.
Yeah, exactly. There's one resolution, but there's actually two different actions within that resolution.
Okay, all right. Any questions or action?
There's been no contact with the owner.
No, there's been no response from the owner.
No response from the owner.
Yeah.
If there's no other, I'll be more than happy to, for the community services director to go ahead and introduce, adopt the resolution, authorize the city manager to execute the contract, as well as placing the special assessment on five oh two San Felipe.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. And we should be doing more of this. Thank you.
We did item eleven, item twelve, comments from council members? All right. We don't have a closed session under this agenda. We will adjourn now to our next meeting, which will follow right now.
There is...
Well, under the special meeting. Am I okay? All right. So we adjourned our, our regular council meeting, and now we are going to call to order a special meeting of the city council, July tenth, two thousand and twelve, and I don't believe we need roll call, we're all here. Item number two is public comment, and item's not in the agenda, but anyone like to address the council on a public comment? Item number three is a closed session, conference of real property negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. Property is parcel numbers zero two zero zero one three two five zero and zero two zero zero one three two six zero. Agency negotiators, the city manager. Negotiating parties are the city of San Bruno and Martin Regis San Bruno Associates LP, and under negotiation, price and terms of payment. All right. At this time, we will close this meeting, go into closed session, and adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, July twenty-fourth, right here at the senior center. We will not be coming back with any reported action.